Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're in the afternoon session of January 22nd. Our next-gen item is not an action item. This is a workshop with Amalia Baldwin. Amalia, can you hear us? There you are. Can you hear us?
Hold on, I might have muted it.
Can you hear us now?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you.
I guess today we are discussing kind of a scope of work and kind of what we think you can do or what you think you can do for us. I'm gonna turn it over to you and let you kind of lead the discussion.
Okay, sounds good. Well, thank you for having me. I worked, as I assume you all know, on the Council Road history just this last fall. And in doing that, I was told that there was the possibility that there would be other roads in the future to discuss or to do research on. And I wanted to have the opportunity to speak with you to just talk about how it may be helpful for me to do a broader project rather than piecemeal roads in terms of budgetary considerations. So when I do road research, like I did for the No Business Council Road, I go through the meeting commissioner meeting minutes. In the case of Council Road, which is sort of on the southern part of Valley County, I had to go first through all the Boise County Commissioner meeting minutes because up until 1917, when Boise County, or part of Boise County, became Valley County. So I went up to Idaho City. I reviewed the council meeting minutes in Boise County. And then I went to Valley County and went through each of the books in the vaults, looking at the different, all the meetings, seeing if I could see any times when the commissioners were thinking about or working on Council Road. That is a very time consumptive process. And if Valley County is considering doing one or more roads, research projects in the future, it's helpful to lump those together so that when I'm going through every page of the council meeting minutes, I'm not doing it for each individual road, but doing it as a lump together and can look on each page for multiple roads instead of one road. And so I was also just thinking, and this is something I've had conversations with Blaine County about as well, there is the opportunity, sort of separate from any specific road history, to go through those historic records and mark any time I am seeing a road officially accepted or officially vacated or a major change in that road. It could be a project that I could work on for Valley County where you would then have an Excel sheet, which I know Cindy has already gotten, has going forward, but I could go backwards with that to try to document any time a road is officially accepted into the county road system, starting in the 1860s in the Boise County records, which do, again, at that time, cover Valley County. So, up until 1917. So I think that's an option that we could talk about for a potential expansion of historic research for Valley County. But of course, I know you are also interested in potentially just doing deeper histories on a few specific roads that have been problematic in the past or promise to be problematic in the future. And then there's also the option of maybe doing a broader history of how did some of the major county roads in the county, or how did the longer ones, the bigger ones, how did they develop? And doing more of a broad history of road development in the county. So I see the opportunity for three different options. We're pursuing just maybe a scope of work on, and one would be to just do an Excel sheet of all the roads that are officially accepted in the historic record. Another could be specifically focusing, and this could be in addition to, but specifically focusing on a few specific roads. And another option would be to sort of do a broader history of road development in Valley County. So.
So, Amalia, are you kind of thinking-
That's what I wanted to talk about.
Like a retainer or a contract or a per-hour basis contract? Or what are you kind of thinking in the back of your mind? Because I feel like you're worth the investment, just from what we've seen from the council, No Business Road, all the work you did on that. I think it more than paid off. And that's kind of what I'm thinking about, is more like a retainer type of a contract. But I want to hear from other folks too in the room to see how they feel about it.
Yeah, and I, just to answer directly, I mean, to me, I could, I could develop a scope of work that was specifically focused on, you know, doing an Excel sheet that, or a spreadsheet, you know, that just documents those past roads. I could develop a scope of work with cost estimates that outlines a couple of specific roads. Or we could talk about, perhaps, yeah, talk about a retainer agreement that would maybe work on a more broader history of roads. As I believe most of you know, I do have a conflict on certain roads in the county in that I have been working for DF Development on a handful of roads. And those roads, we can talk about if you'd like to as well. But I can't give specifics on my research on those. So.
Sure, sure. Larry, Dave, you guys want to comment? Cindy?
I was thinking, we gotta get her under contract before DF gets to, or we're too late.
Okay, come on up.
By the way, I just want to say thank you that there are individuals willing to do this work, because I am not a detail-oriented person. And I thank God that there are those people out there.
So, for my input, one, the research that's done is invaluable on these road projects that you'll be having me look into for validation purposes. And so, doing a broader, a broader project, that would identify any incidents, any, any time where a road was validated or vacated, is going to really make the work and the time that I have to put into the legal research a lot, a lot simpler and quicker for me. A couple of things we realized with the council road research is that we only have records in the clerk's office through 1992. And so, a couple of the, a couple of those things, if we can get some of those issues resolved, one, I think it's going to make Amalia's research a little bit easier for her, and two, might make the contract a little cheaper for the county if all of that stuff is identified, located, preferably scanned into the system. So I just, I wanted to bring that, just make that part of the conversation as well. And Amalia, if you, if you had any other gaps in records and documentation, you know, please address that with the commission too, so we can be aware of all the issues that you had identified with, with that one particular road. But from, from the legal perspective, the, we can't, we can't finally validate these roads without this kind of information and research. So it's critically important we get it, we do get it done, so.
Brian, what I'm wondering is if maybe this is like a subcontractor under your, your guys' department, I'm not quite sure how to set it up.
I, I think, well, we did a scope of work and, and just had a contract for the council road project, but I think a similar, a similar agreement that just broadens the scope of the work that's done, that we just need to refine exactly what we want from it. From, from what I need, I, I need the date and the document that validates, that validated the road and/or vacated the road later. You may want more than that for historical research purposes. And so, you know, if you're, if you're interested in more history and there's more information that would be important to the county to have, then, then I'll leave that to you and Amalia to work out, but.
First thing that pops into my head is, you know, you had to go to Boise County or Idaho City to get this information. What else is there that we should probably know about?
Yeah, I do think, just, I know when the county divided in 1917, or maybe soon after, the plat of information were transferred to Valley County. They were able to break apart their books and transfer any sort of plat records to them. But the council minutes were not transferred. Somebody did photocopy them, and in your vault, you have photocopies. But I don't know what their assignment was, because it's not a full record. It's, you know, it's three pages and then a gap of 20 pages, and then two pages. And maybe they were only gathering references to Valley County, but I don't land in Valley County, but I didn't know that. I don't, I don't trust that as a historian, that, that it was a third, I don't know what their assignment was. And so getting a full copy of all the council meeting minutes from 1863, I believe, is where they start, or maybe it's 1867 through 1917, would be very helpful and would reduce my need to travel to both places. And also, a portion of Valley County was Idaho County also. So, and there are, again, a handful of photocopied records in the vaults for Idaho County, but I didn't look through those because it wasn't relevant to this matter. And I'm not sure how thorough those are, but that would be another issue to consider.
Well, I do know that there was a livestock driveway that came out of Three Forks, came over West Mountain into Valley County. That used to be a major crossover. There was another one, of course, in High Valley, where the, where the early folks came down and then went across Smith's Ferry and into Packer John and over to Garden Valley, and then north into Round Valley. And so there's a lot of information that has been lost. We talked this morning about the CA Barton Road, which is between High Valley and Snowbank Mountain Road. That was a major road for folks to come into the valley because they didn't have to cross the river until they got to Cabarton, and then they can, then they had to figure out something then. But there's a lot of that history that is, would be really, just for shits and eagles, excuse my language, fun to have, you know?
Yeah.
Well, and we had, I mean, we'd previously talked about, you know, opportunities to get some help and maybe some grant dollars from the historical, the state Historical Society. They've got programs to help gather these documents and consolidate them and make sure that we have a complete, a complete record for Valley County, I think. And that, that's, that's really what I was suggesting when I stood up to the podium first, is that if, kind of in the order of, the order of events, if we can do that first, or at least get that process rolling, then I think we'll get more bang for the buck and, under a future contract with HRA. And also, I think, make Amalia's job just a little bit easier.
Who's HRA? Are you lost?
Historical research, that's.
Okay, thank you.
That's me. Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna write that down.
So, Brian, what, this is what's, I mean, we already have it. I don't know how we do the conflict resolution on certain roads that DF have already contracted for. But we go down this road, I can see multiple landowners going, I'm in a contractor, you know. I mean, how do we, how do we get Amelia under, under contract so that we don't have ongoing issues with, you know, with other landowners trying to hire her? And, I mean, DF was smart. They probably got to her before we did.
Sure. Well, I, you know, I think, is, I mean, let's move quickly and get a contract in place and get the, get the research going. To the extent that they have a conflict on certain roads, we'll have to do that research independently. The, the information's still there, and we can, we can acquire that information through the same, through the same resources. But having an expert that knows how to do the work and can, and it just, it lessens the burden and the workload. And so the, just the efficiency is, is, is the benefit of this contract. So the sooner, the sooner we get the work going, the better, better we are.
And I mean, I know we have a, like, top list of 10, but who knows what we don't know right now that we may need in the future. And that's, I mean, we also need to think, are we spending, you know, $25,000 or $250,000? I mean, that's a huge part of the conversation is how much is this going to cost us? And are there grants that we can get to do some of this work? I would love to have all of it here.
Have you talked to Mackenzie about any, those Idaho historical grants, so she'd look at those?
No, I, I have not visited with her, but that's something that we could, we could do. You know, I-
Abby, did we lose her?
No, you didn't. I'm here.
There we go. Like, well, like I said, the, the, from, from just a purely legal perspective, the information that I need, that I'm looking for to help you validate a road is whenever, historically, had any commission previously validated the road in question, and is there any information or evidence that, that had been vacated? That, that's, that's all I need. But, but what, what you get in addition to that is the history of that road and the stories that go along with it, that, you know, as you're reading through, I shared the document with you that, that Amalia created. And I, you know, I was, I thought it was fascinating to learn the history of the road and how it came to be. And I think that is, I personally think that would be something that would be invaluable to the, the community here and the citizens of Valley County to, to preserve that research and provide it, you know, provide the information back to them, just, you know, just for, just for historical stakes. So from my point of view, having a broader scope of work that directs HRA to get as much information about every road in Valley County, it's probably broader than what I'll need from, from the prosecutor's office. But I think it's something that you, as a commission, could, could consider making investment. And if you feel like it's worth the extra work and the money to, to get the information, I see a lot of value in it beyond just, just the legal, from, from the legal point of view.
Who would have given us full standing on Corral Creek? I mean, we've already lost one road.
Yeah, and that's a good example. And from, you know, you approach that, or you approach that issue from, from a legal perspective, when you have this information and this research already done, you are making an informed decision. You can base that decision based on historical fact, and, and you don't have to, you know, you don't have to guess at it. So, so that's, that's a good example of, of how you can, you know, make a, an accurate determination as to whether that should remain in the, on the public roadbook or, or not. While I'm standing here, there's a, there is a case that's working its way up through the system, not in our county, but in, in, in Shoshone County, where there was some, the, the issue that's going to go up in front of, I, I think it's going up on appeal in front of the Supreme Court, is in addition to validating a road, to look for evidence that it was, that that road was also recorded, similar to how you record a plat, or you would record. And there's some dispute going on amongst the parties there. So I'll watch that case and see what's there. But depending on what the outcome is, we may need one more piece of information in this, is that if the Supreme Court sees it, the way Shoshone County sees it, not only would you have to validate it, but you'd have to do something more than just make a notation of that validation in the roadbook. You'd have to actually record it in the, in the, in the assessors, or not the assessors' office, but the clerk's office in addition to, so.
I think there's one in Bonner's going to the Supreme Court right now, too, on an easement, right? They vacated a road that, that they lost an easement onto, a waterway.
Yeah. So there's, I mean, there's, from time to time, there's, there's cases on road validations that go up through the court, and I'll keep you apprised of, of that. And if any of that changes, then we'll, we'll keep Amalia in the loop on those requirements. But as of now, and all we really asked her to do with the No Business Council Road was to look for validation and then any, any evidence of-
Do you remember what we end up, that ended up costing us for that road, for her work?
Not off the top of my head, I hate to guess.
Well, what I'm thinking of, Amalia, is more like a contract where we buy so many hours of your research. Is that kind of what you're thinking of?
It's more typical for us to scope more, a more detailed, with a more detailed description. But we could, we could work out something different. So, I mean, it's, it's more common for me to say, you know, for, we could choose a not-to-exceed amount of money. I guess that's maybe what you're talking about. And we could do as much as we could in, in that amount, with some specific objectives outlined in there. And maybe that, maybe that makes the most sense in this situation. I can tell you that for the council road, it was about $14,000 for that work. And again, when, but I had to do, you know, I was going through all of those books individually, all of those pages. If we are lumping a couple of roads together in that, it wouldn't be as expensive per road, if that makes sense. So, we could, we could set a not-to-exceed ceiling and then lay out a couple of objectives that would be met within that, and then have potentially a little pool of money to go deeper on certain issues or aspects of whatever I find. I do want to mention, too, that DF Development is open to sharing my memos on a couple of these roads. And so, my hope is that you will see that I am, I am citing specific historic documents in these memos, just as I did for you, that perhaps me, you could enter in some sort of mediation if that, if that comes along, rather than having to hire someone else to do the work on those roads.
Sure.
That's my hope. I, I do, do this work with integrity, and I am citing to everything that I, that I comment on, so.
Well, and I appreciate that. I think what we're looking at is probably a, kind of like we do, no, not really with Kara, but a per-hour, so much money per hour for so many hours. If we need 1,000 hours worth of research, then we can contract for that.
Sure.
And, and leave it open. If she needs more on a specific road or a specific case, and she, we have to come back and ask for more.
We can, we can structure however, however you feel the most comfortable. The, there's the method to my madness. And first, recommending to you that we, we kind of fill some of these research gaps in advance, especially since there's some missing information. Missing information just means we don't have a definitive answer. We have, you know, I think we have a pretty good idea, but there could be something really important in those missing pages that we don't have. And that's, doesn't give us the, the definition that we're looking for. And, and two, I want to make sure that if we're going to make the investment in it, that we don't have gaps. Like, we didn't stop too early and say, well, you know, we don't, we don't have the answer that we're looking for, or have an answer so we can make a decision. And then, you know, spend a significant amount of money and still have question marks. And, and so keep that in mind as you're, as you're thinking about this. But I do understand the importance of having a budget and, and staying within that budget, too.
Well, and this is not an action item, so we can't vote today. But my, I'm trying to figure out how to set this up. I think this would be, be a great asset to the county and to the road department and to a lot of our road issues up here. Whether we put money into your budget and you contract with her, or with the county contracts with her, I'm not sure how to proceed in that direction. But if we can spend 40,000 or 50,000 or $60,000 a year to get us access, like on No Business, that's, that's a win-win for everybody. And that's just going to bring in a lot more revenue down the road for folks and open things back up, which is the goal.
What if, what if we tried to do like the top 10? You know, I know that Planning and zoning and Parks and Rec have come up with like a top 10, I think, top 15, top 10, I think. What if we tried to get at least that in the initial scope of work? So she's working on multiple roadways, let's see the costs associated with that. But then, at the same time, apply for one of the historical grants to see if we can move all information over. But at least that would give us what we need right now. And then in the long term, hopefully, we'd be able to attain a grant to bring it all over.
Yeah.
And I think it would be-
Well, that would be awesome to get all of it.
Yeah.
Just make a suggestion.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so just kind of thinking about a couple of different routes. And I have talked with Kenzie about some funding opportunities. I think the state historical grants are a good place to start. And then I think there might be some federal highways money available as well for some of their programs, because they have opportunities for planning and research in, in some of their programs. But I think, you know, having worked with Amalia is that maybe coming up with, like, what you just said is our punch list of the top 10, leaving it open for, you know, additional research. If she comes across this stuff that she sees in the records while she's there, would be good. I think from the grant side, though, we really need to know kind of what we're looking at, if it's 100 grand for the whole project, so that we can start looking for that grant money now. So I, my suggestion would just be to start maybe with Amalia and lay out the, you know, our best-case scenario is what we'd like to see. And then also, maybe it's that top 10 with a little bit of addition. And then we can start looking for the cash. I think it is out there.
And I agree with you. I think it is, too.
Oh, yeah. I'm not too concerned about the budget part of it. I guess what I don't want to have happen is, we're not going to just give you $100,000 and say, this is what we need. It's got to be on a per-hour basis or per-road basis or something, so that we can show the taxpayers exactly how much this is costing us.
I'm cheap. I'd like to keep it out of the taxpayers' budget. Let's get the grant money for it.
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely go for grants.
I thought if we get that top 10 anyway, that satisfies our immediate need. So if we put that in the scope of work as high as priority-
And then have her bid on it?
And then have her give us a per-hourly rate.
Would that work for you, Amalia? If we gave you a list of roads?
And then have me give you a scope? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, like, you know, how many rough hours, how much this is going to cost? And then, because I think, we're all, we don't know what your hourly rate is or anything, and I'm not going to ask. But I think, I think we're all in agreement, we need to hire you. We just need to figure out a way to set it up so that it's transparent with the taxpayers. And, and then I think there should be kind of somebody that's over you, like the prosecutors or the rec department. I'm not saying it should be commissioners, we could certainly do that, but to kind of direct you as far as what we need and don't need.
Yep. No, that sounds great. If you gave me a list of what your high priority was, and then we could, we could set up a scope that you can work, we can work off of, so you would have a sense of how much it would cost.
Awesome. I think that's a way to proceed. Larry?
So I love the idea of the top 10 projects. I think the patchwork downstairs is extremely important, because the one thing that I'm always going to have to give up, I think you said you would let us know what roads are off, because you're, you'll give us that list of roads, so we can see if we're in conflict.
I can give them to you right now if you want.
I'd love to see them.
Want me to write this down?
Sure.
You'll have it.
I can't, I can only see the commissioners right now, so I don't always know who's talking to me.
Larry Laxson.
He's our rec director.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. So the Cabarton High Valley, a stretch of that road, the stretch that goes over DF property, Flat Creek. I don't know if you refer to this as Packer John or Murray Creek, but it's the stretch of road that goes over the mountain on DF land, and then Corral Creek. And I believe, I was told, but I could be wrong, I believe the Corral Creek memo has already been shared, or is that not true?
I think we've already vacated Corral Creek, because we could not prove any kind of public maintenance on that road.
That went away.
That went away.
Okay.
Was there anything on Anderson Creek, Larry?
Well, that's, we, you already got my top three listed.
Well, she wants 10.
Yeah, I know. Well, these three are when you do a DF, yeah, conflicted on those three.
Yeah. Which is probably why, why they came to us. But Anderson Creek is not, and they're totally fine with me working on it. Yep, that one, had that conversation. And just as we're having this conversation here about what I'm conflicted on, I would, if you, if you get me back under contract, I would have the same conversation. If any landowner were to approach us, we would have this conversation before I would agree to do anything with them. So, you know, in terms of protecting, protecting the research and my work.
And I think you did also say that DF might be willing to share their files with us on these three. Would, would that be Colin that's working with you on this?
It is Colin that's working with me on this, yeah. And they, they have a memo on the Cabarton High Valley, Flat Creek and Packer John. I've done all the research, but they do not have a memo yet. So that's still in the process.
Not to bring up a whole nother subject, but do you do any work on the railroad right away?
We certainly can.
Because I think- Because I think there's been a lot of conflict on the railroad. Who owns the easement? Is it, what happens to it if the railroad pulls out? I think that would be a great discussion, just so we all know, because there's a lot of controversy on that.
Yeah, we certainly, like, as a company, HRA has done a lot of work on railroads and easements and all of that. So, that is another thing to talk about if you'd like to.
Well, and I'm assuming, Amalia, that would be like a separate scope of work, separate bill, so to speak. You know, okay.
Well, if we have our, as a retainer under contract, you know, basically we can just say, we're going to start with this. It's not like this is the end of the contract. If these are the top ten, we're going to see where we're at at that moment in time and what funding we've been able to acquire, and then we just go on to the next step.
So would it be appropriate, like in our next meeting as an action item, to go ahead and set up the retainer and the contract, and then get all these roads and all these other issues to, or let's get her tied up and locked in before we push too far? I don't know. That's what I'm asking, Brian, do you have any ideas, or Dave?
Amalia, wasn't your last contract fifty dollars an hour?
Uh, no.
No?
Put a one in.
No.
Oh. Who was fifty an hour?
That's the commissioner pay.
Oh, yeah, no, we don't get that much. Okay, never mind, I'm confusing you with another contract, then.
Well, and I think that's what.
No, I wish I could do it for you for that, but that is not what HRA charges for me.
So, Amalia, when you're, when you're, just like in my business, you have to give them basically a budget, kind of a cost not to exceed a lot of times when I'm doing projects. They just, you know, the people like us want to know, you know, and you can do that, you've been doing it long enough. You can kind of give us an idea, I think this is about where this dollar will end up, and keep a surprise, like monthly, you know, here's where I'm at right now. That's what we'll be looking.
Yep, we do that.
That's what we'll be looking for.
Yes.
Do you feel like you need a, need like a retainer or contract from us here pretty quick? You're not worried about that?
No, I mean, yeah, I've, you've, your biggest competitor, DF Development, has already, has already worked with us, and I don't, I don't anticipate until maybe you start pushing on some of these roads. I don't anticipate anybody else reaching out, but if they were to, I would certainly let Dave know.
Well, I can tell you there's a lot of private.
There's already been one out there, so.
There's a lot of private landowners that are very interested in the railroads, myself included, for full disclosure.
Yeah, uh, no, well, I, I would say at this point in the conversation, if, if somebody reached out to me on something in Valley County, I would check in with Dave before I accepted their job, unless this crumbled all to the pieces, this, this discussion of, of me working further for Valley County. But while we're in these discussions, I have, I would not take somebody else's work without, without talking to Dave first.
Appreciate that.
So Dave, or, well, do you want us to put this on as an action item in February? To kind of lock her down, so to speak? Or do you want to work on a contract in between?
Yeah, let's work on, let's get a draft contract.
And you're going to do that?
Yep.
Does that work for you, Amalia?
Mm-hmm.
And then it might, might be the first or second week, or no, it'd be like the fifth, or maybe the twelfth, somewhere around in there. We'll try and get together again, an open session, and, and award that contract soon as you and, and Brian O'Keefe get it worked out, and we'll go from there.
Okay, so will you, do you plan to have that list of roads before we get into these contract talks?
I think it's already.
The top ten, or?
Well, you've got the top four. Larry, you got any?
Yeah.
This is Larry again. So some of these, some of these roads we're talking about, like you said you're doing the old Cabarton Road right now.
Yeah.
So that actually goes up, it goes across federal land, and it goes across state land. And we're already talking to the state about a lease to allow us to use the state part of that property. That's going to get a little bit conflicted, too, isn't it?
But Larry, if we get this proved as an RS 2477.
Well, that's true.
Then all of that would go away.
I know, wouldn't that be amazing?
With the forest and the state.
Anyway, just, just a thought, thank you. Yeah, it would.
If I'm thinking right.
Well, and I, I would ask that you guys, because, I mean, if one road took that much money, the top ten's going to be, you know, pretty expensive. Make sure what our, that our top ten are truly needs that we have in Valley County. You know, as we move forward, Elts Ride, every year we could budget some for those lesser-known roads, the ones that are not as important to our program. But just make sure that we dial in what you really need before we go down this road.
Well, and I think the old livestock driveway actually comes out between Anderson Creek and Snowbank. And that was a road, the original, one of the original roads way, way back when for sheep and cattle and all that stuff. And I know livestock driveways are, are part of this. The other issue is when, I was growing up, we used to snowmobile up Snowbank Mountain Road. And that was huge, snowmobiling and skiing, all kinds of stuff going on. And then the FAA took the road over and closed it. So there's another road that, I don't know if there's an RS 2477, but there was certainly a lot of public use on it. Don't know if you want to add that to it or not, I don't know.
Who proves the RF 2477 roads?
So those are, it's a Forest Service designation, basically, in, instead of going and fighting over the ownership of the road, they allow us to put RS 2477 on it, saying this was a historical road in Valley County, and we have, oh, no, wait, those are the further roads. RS 2477s are the original roads coming into Valley County. If we can show that, it was prior to even the Forest Service being in place, and so therefore there are roads.
There are roads, yeah.
And livestock driveways have been another big part of that.
Yep.
They weren't necessarily a road, but that's where everybody brought their livestock in.
Okay, cool.
But I guess, Amalia, I can't answer your question right now, other than give us time to think about it. And Dave, I'm sure will, and O'Keefe will keep us in the loop on what roads we need to start thinking about or add to it.
Cool.
Okay? Thank you very much.
All right.
Coming on and talking to us.
Uh, it's my pleasure, I hope we get to work together.
I'm pretty sure we will.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Bye.
In the meantime, could somebody work with the clerk's office and find out what funding mechanisms we have available for this, so we know what we're working with?
Oh, this could come out of PILT or general fund reserve, it could probably come out of the recreation budget.
Well, PILT's about at the bottom of where we should be, and.
We get more PILT here in June, another, another big kick, another one point sum in June, so we're not too far away from that money. Thanks you guys for all your work on this, I think this could really open things back up for us.
Oh, can you give us kind of a, a monthly budget of what that might look like?
How long did it take her to research the no business? Was that a month, or?
No, it, it took several months.
And it was fourteen grand?
But that, again, was, I think, belonged by multiple trips to Idaho City and then back to Valley County. Consolidate all of those documents, have copies of them here.
And I think if we can get her under contract, so we don't immediately get other people wanting to use her services, and if we can get Mackenzie to go after those historical grants, we get those in place, she may not have to drive to Boise.
Right, that's the goal, is that we have everything that she needs here and not have to make her still. Concerned too about the stop in. Hopefully those are just, oh, they're filed somewhere.
Routed trailer.
Lost or destroyed, but.
Didn't you guys find a bunch out at Gold Dust? Somebody was going through stuff at Gold Dust, I thought they found a bunch of them out there.
There's, I, I know there's a trailer out there that has a lot of records. I don't know what it is, trailer.
There's the scary part.
Well.
Comprehensive, yeah, I mean, we need a comprehensive library of documents.
Okay, this is going to sound like another stupid question, but could you do a public information request from Boise County for any of the Valley County records?
Sure.
They'd probably tell you to take a high dive in a low well.
There, I mean, there are public documents, and they're legally obligated to provide copies, but they're charging for it.
So who's going to get those records? Amalia, Amalia? She would have to drive over there and go copy all of them herself?
Well, I'm not sure how that's going to work, I mean, it might, it might just be.
It'd be cheaper to pay so much per page.
My, well, and they'll, they'll charge you labor hours, too. But, um, I, I don't know, without knowing what's available through the state historical society, but there might be some system where they help with that, or they have a process that we can follow to, to, to county, Boise County documents copied and transferred through them and through this grant process. But I, again, I'm only guessing at that, because I don't, I don't know what programs are available or what terms of the grant we would like. I, I have an email that she and I discussed that research component and getting the records up here, I'll go back and dig through.
You know, and we could put them in the downstairs room, there on the left side, and store all this stuff. I mean, Mackenzie, have you ever seen any kind of a grant for historical research?
Yeah, Dave and I were actually looking into it, and there's two, but I don't think it opened.
Are they big grants?
I'm not going to remember, but I'll, I'll throw that through.
What did the assessor's office cost us at the end of the day?
I'm sorry, did you do that, what?
What was the assessor's office at the end of the day? Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Oh, man.
Digitize everything?
Yeah, that was just to digitize and get it in. Two hundred and thirty-some thousand, I think.
I can look for more.
Does anybody know is Boise County laser fished or digitized any of this? It's probably all in books.
No, I thought Boise was digitized.
Wow, that would help a lot. Well, I'm going to see the county, well, they never come to IAC, so I won't see those guys, they're.
One was there last time. I think we move, you know, full steam ahead, we figure out what money's out there, we try and acquire whatever funds we have, so that we know what we need out of our budget to make this happen. But I think it's important to digitize and get it here, that it's our record and we don't send, have to send people over there to go get our stuff.
I bet Boise County would be glad to get rid of it. The other issue that keeps popping in my mind, because I think, I don't remember the old map, Cindy, you might know, but how far down did Idaho County come? And before it was Valley County, it was like halfway, it was way south of McCall.
The area, or somewhere right in there.
Wow.
So there's a whole nother group of records that nobody's probably ever looked at either.
Might have just been that north, west corner of the Valley County, I'm not totally sure, because when we were looking at the original project that HRA took for us, that's where my research took me, was that probably those records were in Idaho County, but I think she found them all in Boise County, somewhere right in that, like Lakeport, probably.
Well, we, we could ask Idaho County Commissioners this weekend if they have any of our information, we'll find out. You know, they probably don't know either.
And we're going to do a FOIA request.
Yeah, we're going to do a FOIA request.
And you're not going to charge us because we take your trash?
We take your trash and all your problems.
There we go, that's a little negotiating.
We didn't say that on live TV, did we?
Yep.
If you look up nineteen oh two.
Yeah.
Idaho Atlas, it will show you those beautiful maps.
I have some maps at home that show it, too.
Nineteen oh two.
My great-grandfather came into this country in nineteen nineteen, so there was a lot of old stuff that I have. Okay.
Just, can I ask one quick question?
No, you have to ask it really slow, because I can't think quick anymore.
When are we going?
I'm going to hurt you. When'd you put it on an agenda?
Soon as you guys are ready to pull the trigger, I guess, is when we're going to talk about it.
A fair basin was in it?
Assuming, O'Keefe, we're ready to go for that, aren't we? No, not yet?
No, I can give you an update, but.
Not, not here, not now. Okay, we're going to move on down the agenda, thanks you guys, this has been a great discussion. History is always important. Well, Mackenzie, come on up here next, I guess, um, these are all action items. The first one is, uh, signed a letter of support for Valley County Parks and Rec grant for skid steer and trailer.
Yes.
Hey, Larry?
It's a Larry.
Want to hang out for a minute?
It's a Larry thing.
Okay.
You want a skid steer and trailer?
I just asked her, she wanted.
All right.
Notice how he just kind of slipped out real quietly?
Skid steel, steer, and trailer, so this is just for trail networks and plowing the parking lot? Well, how are you guys doing this work now, or are you? This is an expansion of your department?
They're contracting out currently, so with this purchase, it will bring it into the department, save the taxpayers money, and it will, you know, be able to maintain campgrounds, open parking lots that are currently closed in the winter, open roads that aren't plowed, trail maintenance, you know, like he was talking about those big boulders or whatever is an issue that, it will have a lot of uses.
So, bring it in-house, is that another employee in the Parks and Rec department to do this work?
Not, not at this point. I think we can do it with, with people we have at this point, but after we get the next campgrounds built, then we will be bringing up enough funds to bring in a seasonal employee. And we're, we're getting to the point now where we got to do maintenance on some of the existing stuff that we built, easiest way to do it.
So is that trailer, um, skid steering trailer, is going to have a snow blower or just a bucket, or what do you have?
At this point, it's got a bucket on it.
Just have a bucket on it? About a new machine?
New machine.
This is a twenty percent match? And how much are we going for?
So the match comes out to seventeen thousand, four hundred and fourteen, and the, so the total cost is eighty-seven thousand, sixty-six.
I'm sorry, can you say our match, seventeen what?
Seventeen thousand, four hundred and fourteen.
This, uh, does it tell, is it a John Deere cap, which one is it?
The cap.
The cap? Out of two sixty-two somewhere?
Yeah, it was, so, we, we looked pretty close, that was the one, the one just under the largest, so we don't have to use that.
Yeah.
Uh-uh.
Just saying.
Well, I think this is kind of important, because as you guys know, Wellington is, is plowed by a backhoe that the county road department provides every year. And Dave, the host camp house is the one that plows the snow. And he's always complained about having to do that, so. This, you know, that's my thing, is like what Neil said, you got somebody to run it, because this is going to be a ten-hour day kind of a deal once you start after every snowstorm.
Yeah, two, and is it going to be tracks, or is it going to be wheeled?
Wheeled, chains.
Yep, that's the only way to do it, especially for wintertime.
We've been told that tracks tend to slide off the mountain.
Yep. Yeah, I, I bought a two sixty-two D this last summer, is used, but two thousand and eighteen model. And I put new tires and chains on it, and man, it goes. My old skid steer was the same way, it had tires and chains. You'll get, you'll get some good use out of it.
Then you can drive it on pavement, too. Um, and this seventy-four nine includes the trailer?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve a letter of support for Valley County Parks and Rec for skid steer and trailer.
I assume that.
Our motion is second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next one is a letter of support for Valley County Parks and Rec grant for Gordon Titus parking lot expansion. This is one that Mark brought in?
Yes.
Okay.
I do want to put on record that we're not loaning Mackenzie to Adams County. This is a Valley County grant, so she's working on behalf of Valley County, not Adams County.
Correct.
I was concerned of the taxpayers if we're loaning people to somebody else. Yeah, and I'm fully in support of this, so.
Is this the one you talked to us about last week?
Yes.
Okay.
Mark Woods was here. And this has no match?
No match for us. But Adams County and McCollson Mobile Club will be providing.
Did you make a? I'll make a motion that we, uh, sign a letter of support for Valley County grant for Gordon Titus parking lot expansion.
A second.
Who's the second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next one is a letter of support for Valley County Parks and Rec for a vault toilet and picnic tables at Clear Creek recreational parking area.
Or whatever you guys decide to call it, for the purpose of the grant, because it is ORMV. I was targeting the recreation parking portion of it. So our match is 15,374, and that's for, for a double vault toilet and four picnic tables.
So this Clear Creek thing, that was what we had talked about earlier, blew up and everything, but that was still there anyhow. Parking area?
Yeah. Yeah, that's there. We're just gonna put the picnic tables up above the vault toilet. It is desperately needed out there.
Right. Are you including, are you expanding the parking area or making it more, or is it just that?
That.
Just that, okay.
So it's gonna become a day use area. Are you charging a fee for a day use area?
Five dollars.
Five dollars a day?
Five dollars for the season, be part of our whole package.
Okay.
And as you know, parks don't need a conditional use permit. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we support Valley County Parks and Rec for a vault toilet and picnic tables at our Clear Creek Recreation Parking Area.
Second, who's the second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, the next one is a letter of support for the Valley County Sheriff's Office for Jet Boat.
I'll make a motion that we support Valley County Sheriff's Office grant for the jet boat.
And a motion of second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And I don't have, did we have anything in our packet for that? Oh, there it is, vest, no, that's a vessel fund.
No, it was approved last week. The sheriff's office presented it.
Okay. The next one is approval of submission of the Off-Road Motor Vehicle Fund application. Buddy, that should be in your packet.
What is that?
Oh, so the ORMV is the skid steer? It's just called the ORMV Off-Road Motor Vehicle Fund?
Oh, got it. So we did the letter of support up top, and now this is approval of the application.
This is the real application.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the submission of the Off-Road Motor Vehicle Fund application.
Second. Who's the second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next is recreational road and bridge fund application.
That is the Gordon Titus parking lot expansion.
Gordon Titus, thank you.
That's, that is what now?
The Gordon Titus parking lot.
Oh, that's what that is, okay. Make a motion that we approve the submission of recreational road and bridge fund application.
Second.
Who's the second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And recreational trails application?
That one's the vault toilets?
Yes. So for this one, I do, I do wanna mention for all of them, we did do the public notice. We posted it in the newspaper on January 8th and 11th. And then it was noticed on Facebook and our website since January 3rd. Um, we did receive one email about the parking lot. You guys want me to forward it to you, or I print it off so you can read it?
How much, if you just print it up, bring it up?
Okay, I'll bring it up with the rest.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Is it an opposition or approved?
Opposition.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the submission of the recreational trails program application.
Okay.
Who's the second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The last one on the list is the Woody Baumash Project Performance Report and Federal Financial Report, and that's in your packet as well.
So this is the last of it, right?
Um, so this is just the report, I have to do quarterly reports, so this is just update on the project and how much we've expended.
So we're not asking for reimbursement on this one?
No, not at this point, so we still need, um, to get the software, and then we have some other labor charges that we need to apply for.
So we've already, we've already gotten the money to pay us back for the woody debris grinding?
It has not been reimbursed, but we did submit for reimbursement.
Okay.
So we will get reimbursed, is what you're saying?
For that one.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign the Woody Baumash Project Performance Report.
Second. Who's the second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That's awesome. REC just came on.
Yeah, I could feel it. I, I was sweaty, and I started rolling up my sleeves, unbuttoned my shirt. Dying in here.
Only 73, but that was enough.
Oh, yeah. It's me.
I usually just look at each page, but totally up to you.
You'll be freezing, be dripping in me.
Oh, it was, it was warm in here before that kicked on.
It was, I'll admit that.
Good job, McKenzie, we have got you busy.
You are doing awesome.
When I sent, well, I'll get to go with you.
Yeah, for sure.
Normal commissioners.
We will get you a part-time person, maybe through this GNA stuff, to work on all those GNA grants.
Hey, McKenzie? Oh, it worked still, never mind.
Saw them?
I've got four of them. And then there's the email.
The who?
The email for Clear Creek. Okay.
You gonna be down in your office for a while?
Yeah.
I'm gonna swing down when we're done. It's not a personal deal with the wife's.
This is not, this is not McKenzie, not the one you want.
The wrong one?
I'm McKenzie. Number two.
Two.
You named McKenzie Kramer.
The big bubbly girl, it's always on the, the, you are too.
Oh, thank you. No, she's wonderful.
Not on the big part, I'm sorry. Getting myself more in trouble, is that, I gotta shut up.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, McKenzie. Have a great day.
Yeah, you're talking about the gal, it's always on the.
She's our employee, that would be a problem.
Right.
Because the Kramer is our contractor.
Is our contractor.
Outside contractor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All righty then. Hey, Liff is here.
I know that face. Got two of them.
We got about three more minutes, guys, then we'll go into executives, so come on in and have a seat. We, you, you ready?
Was back here or up there?
Um, let's sit back there for just for a sec. Here, our next agenda item is an action item, this is an executive system, Brad O, code 742061B. Do I have that motion?
Yes. I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into 2061B evaluation by roll call, please.
Aye, Thompson.
Mop and I.
Just McGee and Gabby will be in at 1:50. Let me know when we're off.
Okay.